If you see me checking my phone tonight, it's because I have made my 12-year-old start doing laundry, and he is trying to go over the top and try to shrink all his clothes. So he will occasionally send me text messages, showing me that everything's on warm. So if I check my phone, it's just for me to say, "No, don't do that." So I apologize. But it's not working, so I'm gonna have to buy him all new clothes. So here we go. Call the meeting in order. Those that care to please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, could you lead us in prayer?
Let us pray. Dear Father, I just thank you for this day, and thank you for all that you do for us. Well, I pray, God, that tonight, that you would just, thank you for all the people that have come out, Lord, just to express concerns or just see what's going on in the city. I pray, God, that you would just be with us, guide and direct us in all that we do and all that we say, and we give you the glory in all that we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate the full room. I'm hopeful that we get to have a spirited conversation tonight and hear from a lot of you. We're gonna open things up with citizen participation. This is about anything not on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about a particular agenda item, this is not your time. We'll get to you in a little bit. But we'd like to open up to anything that is not on the agenda, and Terry Mooneyham's here. I want to start off with you because I'm really excited about this.
And my name is Terry Trogdon Mooneyham, and I reside at 1733 East Charles in Republic. I'm currently serving as the president for the Republic Historical Society. The Republic Historical Society is here tonight to update our progress on creating a museum and community space at 221 North Main Street where the Public Works Building once stood. I did leave it on in packets floor plans for our proposed project. Our plan is to construct a 16,230 square foot two-story brick facade building that is reminiscent of the original buildings on Main Street. The museum building will give the appearance of three storefronts on Main Street. The street level will feature large glass storefront windows with large venti-style recessed doorways. The second story will have arched windows copying the look of many of our old historic buildings. The museum will have a welcoming two-story four-year entrance with wall murals, murals featuring Republic's history timeline with revolving displays of community and historical artifacts. A large open staircase leads to the second floor with more display areas, classroom space, and a large research center for community utilizing our archives, which currently holds thousands of records. This floor will be accessible to all with an elevator and two fire-retardant enclosed stairwells. The south side of the first floor will be our event center. The space will accommodate up to 160 people with an audiovisual area for programs, a catering area, and a separate Main Street entrance. French doors will open onto the existing park area, creating a lovely setting for gatherings. On the north side will be a coffee shop and a gift shop area. This will have a museum entrance along with a Main Street entrance, lots of cozy inside seating with tables outside. The Historical Society is a 25-plus-year nonprofit, all-volunteer organization that has completed several projects for the community. The Republic arrow sign on Highway 60 in Maine was saved, restored, and placed on land that was purchased by the Historical Society. Two successful books have been published, and we have a growing membership and have experienced an increased interest in Republic history and in museum visitors. With the city's partnership, we are confident that we will fund this exciting project and create a destination that our community will have pride in while participating in the revitalization of our historic downtown. We ask the city council through resolution to grant the property at 221 North Main and the Pocket Park to the Republic Historical Society for the purpose of creating a space in Republic for many to enjoy.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I did it in less than three minutes.
You did. Perfect. Ma'am, I'm gonna tell you that I've been positive about this project from the very beginning. They were just teasing me that I've got two and a half meetings left, so I don't know how much time I have to be able to work on this, but I will tell you that all the time that I do have will go towards this. So we will be in touch about the next steps, if that is acceptable with you.
That's good. We do have an April 23 deadline for a grant, a very, very important grant, that if you could work with us on that deadline, then that would, that would really be important to our, to our cause.
Mr. Cameron?
Mr. Mayor, Terry, thank you. I think it was six months ago or longer you asked for a plan and the time to do this. So I thank you for the leadership that you all have taken on to lead the initiative. It will not take long to put together a resolution, but I'm sure Andrew has told you what the provisions I'll probably include in there is basically, there's a timeline. If funding falls short, that there would be the ability to file an extension. I mean, there's not gonna be just like, hey, if you don't have the money, it's over. It'd be like one of those things like, we'll work with it as long as there's an effort to do that. There'll be some other provisions, but it should not be long. I'll work with the city attorney and try to craft something by the first or second meeting in April. It's just a resolution, so basically it's only a one read. So if we do that, I believe by the second meeting, we should be good. But we will get something to you in the next couple of weeks that you can look at and consider.
Something that we can have signed by the city so we can apply that toward our grants.
Yeah. What is our April? What is, what's the agenda say? Our April?
It is City Council, April 2nd and April 16th.
So by April 16th, I'll have something before this council for consideration based on your request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing nothing else, Brian, you're up last.
I'll see if I can get through this guy.
All right. Please state your name and where you live, and you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'm Brian Smith, 726 West Scott Circle. I've lived in Republic all my life. I also run the City of Republic Missouri satire page. We're about to hear from a lot of folks who are upset about the effects of Republic growing too fast. A field in their neighborhood is about to develop. The current administration has been pouring gas on the growth and development for years now, yet no one has spoken up to oppose it. We have maxed out our taxes within the city. We have changed the rules to allow dispensaries, bars, and large corporations into our town. We have set our utility fees to increase every year until 2029. We have increased the city's debt from $11 million. By the end of this year, it will be 112 million. Every field like the one in your neighborhood will soon be filled with new developments, and we still don't have a workable sewer treatment plan. All this was done with very little input from the citizens. Excuse me, I need to breathe for a minute. I stop breathing a little bit when I speak, so I just need to take a few breaths. Only 750 people made the decisions in the last few elections. If we don't like what's happening in our hometown, then we need to speak up. Every meeting should be this full. Find out what ward you live in. There's an election in a couple of weeks. Talk to your candidates. Enough is enough. It's all gone too far. No more taxes, no more fee increases, no more pet projects, no more dang bronze tigers. Republic's growing too fast. We can't stop the growth, but we have to grow in a sustainable way, and this ain't it.
Thank you for your thoughts. Moving on to anyone else wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will move on to mayor's announcement. I have the honor of appointing Kami Means to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term expiring February 6, 2027. I want to thank Kami for her volunteering to be on planning and zoning, and we appreciate her service. Moving on to the consent agenda, these are items number two, three, and four on the agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions about items two, three, or four. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes by a vote of eight to zero. We do have a few meetings coming up, boards, commissions, and committee schedules. We have a city council meeting on April 2nd, 2024, and April 16th, 2024, a board of adjustments meeting April 4th, 2024, and a planning and zoning meeting April 8th, 2024. Moving on to old business and tabled items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-09 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title II, Public Health, Safety, and Welfare, Chapter 215, Offenses, Article 215, seven, or 12, excuse me, offenses concerning minors, Section 215.2000, use of alcoholic beverages and/or controlled substances by minors at open parties prohibited, penalties, person in control of premises liable of the municipal code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff presented on this last time. Are there any updates from the city?
There are no updates.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-09.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of eight to zero. We will move on to item number six on our agenda. This is 24-10. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-10 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving the annexation of approximately 25 acres of property located near 1100 North Main Avenue and adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city, Mr. Tabor?
No updates.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-10, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-11 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title I, Chapter 130, Municipal Court, Article 131, Municipal Court, General Provisions, Article 132, Court Costs and Fees, Section 130.080, Report to City Council, 130.180, Jailing of Defendants, 130.250, Court Costs, and 130.280, Installment Payments of Fines of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
None.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-11, please.
Motion.
We will now take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes by a vote of eight to zero. We will now move on to new business, specifically item number eight on our agenda. All right. I'm gonna pause here for a second. Those of you that have come to speak about this, this will be your time. We are going to give everybody a chance to speak that wants to speak. I have three slips up here, but if you change your mind and you want to speak, you're welcome to. You'll each be given three minutes. I do want to let you know that we take our responsibilities very seriously. We watched the planning and zoning meetings. We saw what happened on YouTube. We appreciate a lot of feelings about this, and I say all that so that we can all remain calm. I don't mind speaking in public, but some people absolutely hate it. So Brian's back there, and he hates speaking in public. I get it. I talk. Some people don't. Don't worry about it. Come up here, say your piece, be polite. You'll be given an opportunity. Now, here's the thing that some people get bothered by. A lot of times, they will ask questions, and I don't immediately respond, and that's because sometimes I don't know the answer. So if you ask a question I don't know what to answer to, sometimes we can address it quickly. Sometimes I have to say I get back to you. So don't be frustrated if we don't immediately answer a question. And the last thing I'll say is, take a deep breath, and we'll all make it through it. So here we go. I would entertain a motion and a sec. Oh, I forgot one thing. Sorry. The actual how this happens. This is a first reading, so we're not gonna vote tonight on whether or not this passes. So that's an opportunity for you to get in contact with your city council members, to ask other questions, and for us to consider. So don't be frustrated if there's not a final answer tonight because we're not allowed to have a final answer. This is fact-finding. So with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-12 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 40.64 acres located at 664 Aaron Way from Plan Development District PDD to Brookside Estates Plan Development District, PDD 24001.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Chris Tabor, principal planner for the Bills Department. SGF Landing is requesting the rezone of 40.64 acres at 664 East Aaron Way from Plan Development District PDD to the Brookside Estates Plan Development District 24-001 PDD. The property is currently occupied by two residential dwellings and various accessory structures. The proposed development plan will allow for a mix of single-family residential lots consisting of 48 medium-density single-family residential, or R1M, lots with a minimum size of 9,000 square feet and 105 high-density single-family R1H lots with a minimum square footage size of 7,000 square feet. The development plan also includes new water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater systems to support the development. It has required, it requires a collector street and a number of local streets to support the development. Since the lots in this development plan reference our zoning districts, they will meet the height and area requirements that are associated with those districts. Staff has provided a handout to council that shows some of the various lot requirements for both districts as an aid. The subject property is currently part of the Valley Trails, a planned development district approved in 2018. The Valley Trails development plan currently allows for 115 single-family residential lots with no minimum lot size. This PDD has no required minimum lot size with a width of, a minimum width of 50 feet on those lots and no minimum depth for those lots. The PDD requires buildings to be at least 15 feet from the road and from the back property line. The subject site is surrounded by existing agricultural and residential zone properties. To the north are medium-density single-family residential R1M parcels. To the south are Green County Agricultural A1 properties. To the east are parcels zoned as medium-density single-family residential R1M and as part of the Valley Trails Plan Development District, PDD. And to the west are parcels zoned as medium-density single-family R1M. All incoming lots would meet zoning district requirements of their adjacent existing lots. So you can see there, all that, all of the green is the R1M. The lots they all touch, with the exception of the Green County lots to the south, are of the same zoning district. So the idea was that all incoming lots are going to be of the same zoning and requirements of lot sizes and lot areas as the lots that they're adjacent to. The proposed development would create six new streets internal to the subdivision and extend four existing streets, Hardy, Hadley, Halsey, and Grace. All extended streets were stubbed out to the subject parcel during the development of adjacent subdivisions as required by ordinance. This is to provide future connection to this property. There would be no connections at East Aaron Way or East Bryson. The construction of Grace is especially important with this subdivision because there's currently no connection between Miller and County Line, which is about a 5,000-foot stretch. So this would create that connection for emergency services and residents. A traffic study was required as part of this application and found no improvements were necessary at full build-out of the project. All stormwater retention, detention areas, drainage easements, and all open space common areas will be owned and maintained by the developer and/or property owner association. There is no floodplain on the property. There are no sinkholes on the property. The property can be adequately served by municipal utilities. There is currently capacity in the water and the wastewater systems of the city to serve this development. The proposed plan meets the requirements of the city's adopted ordinance and all plans. The design and precise placement of the streets, sidewalks, water, sanitary sewer systems, and stormwater detention will be reviewed during infrastructure planning if the project gets that far. The next steps in the process of the development of the subject parcel upon a favorable outcome are the submittal of infrastructure plans and the, and the pursuit of an infrastructure permit associated with that. The staff is recommending approval of this zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have questions from council for Mr. Tabor? We've got a lot, so I'm gonna start down here, and we're gonna work this way, okay? So, yes, sir.
I just wanted to go over a couple of questions, things that have been fielded to us via emails and phone calls. The current PDD that's in place, there is not a plan for lots for that, correct?
So there, there is a plan that was passed with the plan development. There is not a plat of lots.
As of now, no one could step in and start building with what is there?
Correct. They would, they would be required to do infrastructure planning. You would see a true, like, if you, if you've seen that, that provided document that goes with that, there's no measurements on those lots. Those houses are just drawings. Those trees are just drawings. Were someone to actually build this, there would be some changes in that. That depicts less houses on that, on that picture than is the minimum that they could build, so it's very likely that you would see more houses than is shown on there. So a number of changes could occur. What you would not see changes to is the general configuration of those streets, the connections that they make, and all the notes on the sides, such as the lot sizes and the density requirement.
And that was kind of my follow-up question. So you said 115 lots is what is currently allowed to be built in that space if no changes were made. Is that right?
Yes. So they were granted a density of 2.7 at a little over 66 acres, and they have built a portion of that. The remaining portion is 115 lots.
Gotcha. And the only requirement we have is a 50-foot frontage, but no minimum other than that? And so the 115 could be at a high-density type layout if, if that's what they chose to do with it?
They could build something that was 50 feet across, and then those houses would sit, could sit 15 feet from the street and 15 feet from the backyard. There's no minimum depth for those lots, so we don't know how long they would be.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions, sir? No. All right. Just work our way down. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
One else, in your experience, has this developer built in Republic? I heard that there was quite a few other things.
This developer that's, that's proposing the new project?
Yeah.
This developer is a new developer to the area, so they haven't built anything in the area.
Cool. Do we have anybody else on my left?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So some of these questions have already been answered, but I'm just gonna go through them one by one so I don't miss any. First off, I would like to thank all the citizens for reaching out by phone or by email, and thank you for your passion for something that you believe in. Mr. Tabor, I just have a couple of clarifying questions that, for the citizens that have reached out to me. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the current PDD drawing is just artist rendering and not necessarily what the layout would look like, other than the street designs?
I would describe it as an artist's rendering. That, it was the result of a previous Plan Development District ordinance. We would not allow something like that. We would not present something like that to you guys today. There, but again, there are certain elements of that that we would be requiring them to stick to, but, you know, the houses could be in, you know, some of that's gonna shift around, I would guess, as people get there. If you look at that plan, it's obviously not accounting for the pipeline. So, I mean, at the very minimum, you would see all of that stuff shift.
Right. And that, that was one, one of my next questions, is that on that layout, on that rendering, the pipeline's not showing on there. So a lot of those lots on the north end of that property would, would have to be shifted somehow perhaps to work around the pipeline.
They would absolutely have to be shifted.
Okay. The current PDD shows there being green space. Different people have different opinions about green space, but on that rendering, right through the middle of the property, is more of a drainage to the detention. Is, is that the way I understand that?
So they did not provide any infrastructure planning as part of this. It appears that they have accommodated some form of drainage to that detention. I, you know, they don't, they don't show or call out anything. They also don't call it out as green space. So in, in my decision, we would not be requiring them to, you know, plat that with green space along that exact area that they've shown.
Okay. And I think some of the citizens are, are seeing that because then they see the new proposed PDD, and, and they're asking, well, why can't they have more green space like the current PDD? And I just want to kind of clear that up. It's my understanding that the new PDD has all the water drainage underground.
Sure. The new PDD would use, you know, modern techniques of gutter and sewer.
And then either PDD, the detention location would be in that northeast corner because that's the low point of the property.
Yeah. Topography kind of dictates where that would have to go.
Right. So any trees that are in that area, no matter if the current PDD was built out, those trees perhaps could, could be affected either, either way?
It would be up to the property owner or the developer what trees stayed or went. I can tell you from experience, it's very difficult to keep a tree on the edge of a basin. You build that basin up with a berm, and so what we've seen in the past when this has happened is people may keep the trees, but you're surrounding much of the trunk with dirt, which, I mean, that tree's not gonna last.
And then it's my understanding, there's like a 15-foot, I wouldn't call it an easement because I think it's owned by this property, but that runs towards the floodplain, and that any overflow from the detention would, would be piped perhaps to that flood, floodplain, where any overflow water wouldn't be affecting the existing citizens.
So that is what the developer said at the Plan Development Meeting. They do own a strip that goes to the north about 15 feet. It does connect them to the floodplain. What they had suggested was that what, what they would like to do is to make that go underground from the detention straight to the floodplain, so they would be alleviating some existing stormwater conditions even on adjacent property by doing that. I do want to point out that that is not on the plan, so if that is, you know, that is something that could be added to the plan before the final version, if that was something that, you know, we wanted to hold them to. Right now, you know, what you see is kind of what you would get on that.
Gotcha. Okay. So by email, I was informed that they thought 58 houses would be on this, and, and so 58 houses to 115 is a big jump, but I just think that there may be some misinformation out there, and I just want to clear that up, which Justin had, had asked that question. So I just want to make sure that the citizens know that originally they could build up to 115 houses instead of 58.
Correct.
And then Aaron Way, I think there was a design out there at one point that Aaron Way was connected. I know you touched on this, but Aaron Way is not connecting to this PDD or the proposed PDD.
So city ordinances generally require that developments adjacent connect to these stubbed-out streets. It's what, from a traffic standpoint, from a design standpoint, it's what we prefer just to facilitate traffic flow through the city. In this particular case, we worked with the developer at the behest of the public and some of the comments we received early to revise the plan and eliminate the two connections at Bryson and at Aaron Way, simply because that met closer to the standards of the adopted PDD. And so that was, you know, something that was done to try and accommodate, to keep people to the original argument that was made.
And then you touched on this as well, the traffic study that meets the city requirements. I mean, it was done. I heard that in the P&amp;Z meeting, and that all meets.
So, so the traffic study is done by a traffic engineer, professional. We also have it reviewed by our in-house traffic engineer who, who works for the city. So this particular development, you know, there, there's a lot of street connections, so it is going to take traffic in a lot of different directions. It, it's what I expected to see on that.
Okay. And then lastly, I'm gonna kind of throw Mr. Franklin under the bus a little bit from a Facebook post, so.
Hope it's a small bus.
Yeah. So he, he had shared a post from three years ago saying that this roll of 42 Romex wire before COVID cost $38 plus tax, and today's market with taxes over $94. And today's market with taxes is over $94. So, we're talking about a PDD that was put in place in 2018, six years ago. It came through COVID. Expense has increased. And I know that's a concern for some of the existing homes around there about the cost of the new homes. I'm aware of the, you know, increase since COVID, but this kind of really shows, and this roll of wires used in every house out there.
I think the development community would attest to that. There's probably several people in this room who have their own pocketbooks reflect the change in prices. Not necessarily in the construction industry, but just across the board. Also, you know, a dollar is not worth as much right now as it was in 2018. But yeah, what we are hearing is that it is just way more expensive to build a house than it was back then.
Mr. Tabor, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, sir. We'll move down this way. Mr. Franklin?
Sure.
I'm just going down the line here.
No.
Do you want to respond to the bus comment? I mean, good lord!
Absolutely. Well, I'm glad he brought that point up because it is true. You know, and I'm looking at this too. When I look back, it was 2017 or 2018, whenever this was approved. Of course, things were booming, prices were much different than they are today. So, when I'm looking at that from that standpoint of that timeframe, that PD, that style of home, the cost today is substantially more, and almost on every product you're looking at. So, I was kind of curious, you know. I haven't had a chance to look it up and figure it out, the difference of a cost of a house on that size of a lot in 2018 versus today. And I can tell you it was probably in the six figures more easily, but do you have any kind of a figure like that?
I don't. That's not my area of expertise.
That was really, since he brought that up, that was kind of one of my biggest questions, was just the cost of building today. Everything's more expensive, the infrastructure's more expensive. When you take it down to that many lots, it's really hard to recoup all of the costs that go into infrastructure, whether it's the water, the sewer, the streets, and everything else. And so, it's just kind of a difficulty. You know, I understand the citizens' frustration, but it's also difficult looking at it from the builder's standpoint and just trying to make something work with the expense of everything. It's difficult. And that's really all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Urdin?
Again, appreciate everyone reaching out, and a lot of feedback, and appreciate the staff had a lot of questions today. Just to reiterate, the net extra houses compared to the previous PDD would be what? Could be up to what?
So, I'm sorry, so the difference in the two houses?
Yeah.
Or in the two plans?
Yes.
So, the existing one would allow for 115, and the new one would allow for 153 maximum. It could obviously be less.
Okay. And then, you talked about the density, so the areas around it. Would they be more dense, less dense than this proposal, the neighborhoods adjacent to it?
So, the neighborhoods are, I would characterize them as larger lots. They are all the same zoning district. When they, when those were built, the developers opted to use that zoning district, which, you know, a minimum of 9,000 square feet. And then, when they built those lots, they did choose to build larger lots at that time. I would also say that if you were looking at just the square, just the area of that and dividing it by the number of houses, there is floodplain in some of those places. There's pipeline in some of those places. Those numbers are important to take into consideration because that space is unusable for building, and so that does always lower a density.
So, on the previous, the density of the previous PDD, is there similar, you know, less dense areas like that in town? Is that pretty common, or is that less dense than the majority of the spaces we have?
The existing PDD?
Yes.
I have, I've worked on one subdivision that had a density of that. The Walker Heights subdivision that was preliminary platted not long ago. That one has a density that is close to that. That, I haven't seen anything below like 3.5.
So, everything else besides that one would be more dense, okay? And then, again, just to make some clarification I had on there, obviously the lot size, there's some limitations of how close it can be, but none of this would regulate the size of the house, the facade of the house. That stuff is not included in this. That's, I mean, it has to be the spec, but...
The city ordinances do not regulate how large a house or small a house you can build on a lot. So, you can have a large lot and build a small house. You can have a small house and build the entire lot, up to the setbacks. But we also do not require any materials on those houses. So, yes, we are just looking at, in this instance, the zoning and the minimums for the lots and the arrangement of those lots.
Thank you. It's your turn anyway.
Yeah, you see, I'll swing back by, so...
Hey, go ahead. We're going down the road.
I just needed some clarification. So, at the P&amp;Z meeting, you mentioned how many houses were being built. You were referencing ones that had open permits, basically, not possible projected builds.
We have a number of houses that there is some, they are in some planning process or infrastructure build process. And then, a little bit of that number that I quoted was actual vacant lots that are not yet permitted, but they will be shortly.
Okay.
You can expect that.
So, I know there's a lot in Old Savannah and still Shula Ridge that haven't even begun to be built.
Yes, and I don't think I would surprise anyone by telling you that those, we will be issuing permits. We've issued a lot of permits on Phase 4, which is the most recent piece we've final-platted. And as Phase 5 comes through, they'll immediately start pulling permits as well.
Okay, another thing on the traffic study, it was conducted when there were seven exits. Does that affect this current one?
The traffic study was revised to, there was an original traffic study. We definitely went through in the revision. I can make sure that the council gets that updated one. They did initially send us one that did use seven exits. Yeah, we caught that on the review and made them remove that.
That's just the copy that I got.
Absolutely, absolutely. I bet we did send out the first copy to council when we got that. We worked over that through the review process, and I'd be happy to send that out again.
And then, on the traffic study, that only really accounts for roads that connect directly to this. It doesn't account for Main Street or Miller Road.
So, when you ask the developer to do a traffic study, what you are looking at, you're trying to weigh what is a reasonable improvement and how far is this person responsible for? So, we wouldn't take a traffic study here and say, this 153 homes needs to make the improvement at Main and 60. So, there's, you've got to have some point of reasonable delineation. There's state law and case law that definitely keeps us from doing that type of thing. So, what we do, the requirements we make and require them to review for are based on that case law and how far we can, how far we can make those improvements or request those improvements to be made.
Okay, thank you.
Why were those other two entrances taken out, the one on Aaron Way and Willam Branch?
So, if you remember on the original, the existing PDD, the Valley Trails PDD, those entrances are not there. They were removed also through part of the public evaluation process that the developer went through. A similar process was gone through with this developer and some of the members of the public. As we got feedback from members of the public, we talked to the developer and asked them to consider removing those. You know, they're happy to remove those. It adds another lot. But for the city, you know, we're the ones who really want those. In this case, it was an effort to try and adhere to what's already there and bring as few surprises as possible with the zoning change.
So, would you agree that the four connecting streets, Hardy, Hasley, and other ones, would see a tremendous increase in traffic compared to the one entrance on Grace?
No, I would not say that. Would see a tremendous increase in traffic compared to the one on Grace?
Yeah.
I don't know why that would be.
There'd be more traffic going down those four streets up and down with the four east-west connections compared to the one east connection. That's what I'm saying. Why is there four connections to the west and only just one to the east?
Because they exist in all of, if you look down those roads, those are very long roads. Those stub outs were made with the plan that that property was going to develop. Fire, today, if we did something like that, we would require hammerheads there. So, right now, when those are served by fire, fire has to back up more than 800 feet if they have to serve something there. Those requirements are a health and safety requirement as well as a traffic facilitation requirement.
Okay.
Does that answer all your questions, Mr. Urdin?
Sure, yeah.
Very good. I'll come back, I'll come back down the row now. Mr. Franklin, did you have something else?
You know, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I wanted to touch on, you know, and I do appreciate all the citizens that came to planning and zoning. I've watched that meeting three different times. And so, I've gone through all the different concerns, and you know, as we're on this fact-finding mission, definitely going through all of them. One thing that really caught my attention in that meeting was from Mr. Nelson. And Andrew had mentioned the fact that the median income here in Republic, you know, of course, with inflation and everything else, I don't want to put any particular blame on it, but the expense of a home, the value of our dollar has really, it's affected us. And so, Mr. Nelson had mentioned the fact that these houses in here in the middle, although they are not attractive to all of us, and I understand we all have our preferences, but 80% of Republic's citizens can afford that type of a house. And when I'm looking at the expense of building, I used to build, I used to wire a lot of starter homes. When I moved to Republic, I moved into a starter home. My starter home is no longer what I would consider a starter home. I don't even know what to consider a starter home because the expense is so much. So, I really appreciate the concerns that the citizens are bringing, but I really did want to put attention to that fact that Andrew had brought out in the fact that, you know, 80% of citizens in Republic can afford a house that's in there. And even though it's not a house that all of us would want to live in, it is a house that borderline affordable. And affordable housing is really an issue. Having a place to move into and affordability has been an issue for quite some time, but I just wanted to kind of touch on that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone to my left?
Just one thing.
Mr. Wilson?
Concerning traffic, has MoDOT showed any interest in making a left-turn lane at 60 and Main?
I would have to defer to Andrew on that.
You're supposed to say your name.
Andrew Nelson, Assistant City Administrator. I forgot it for a second. Yes, so 60 and Main appear on MoDOT's prioritization. That's scored on a number of different metrics with intersections in Ozark and Nixa. You know, I always encourage those that are concerned to contact MoDOT because that plays a part in the prioritization, just to be transparent. The more they hear about it, the more they're going to prioritize it. So, I would encourage you or anybody to reach out. Where it ranks, I would have to look back, but probably not in their top 50. Maybe in the 20 to 50 range as far as we look at priorities of the region, I-44, 65. I mean, big intersections. So, it's an intersection that we've always targeted as a potential cost share. Main on the north side belongs to Republic, so the quickest way to prioritize an intersection like that is to cost-share it with MoDOT. You know, speaking to the traffic study, the goal from our perspective, and I'll speak to why those two connections aren't made because our ordinances technically would tell you that you need to make all the connections. But to Chris's point, when we looked at the approved PDD, they weren't there for a number of reasons due to public input. So, being that it was allowed in the previous PDD, we felt it appropriate to allow the request in this PDD as well. But generally, when you, when you talk about a traffic study and a development like this, the model shows an even dispersion of traffic in generally all directions. We're all going to go the shortest way we can to wherever we're going. And generally, everybody that's leaving here is going to work, to Walmart, or wherever that is. So, they're looking to get to the nearest collector's street at a minimum, if not a material. So, generally, we're going to go to Grace, and we're going to go east or west, and we're going to go to Republic on most of our trips. So, from that perspective, as far as the number of connections, what we're hoping to do is disperse the traffic even more with more connections. To Mr. Urdin's point, yes, we're encouraging that to alleviate some of the other points of traffic intersection.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson, did I answer your question?
Yes.
Very well. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. One more quick question, just kind of following up on what's been asked. When the city is working with the developer and we're laying out a plan like this, is there any discussion to the size or type of house? Or is it purely about the zoning and the size of the lot?
As we don't have any control over that, whatever they told us, you know, that's only interesting in like a passing way for us because whatever they tell us, you know, potentially could not come to pass. Someone could rezone a property, just like they could any property, and then that could sell to someone else. And they wouldn't be held to build whatever that person said they were going to build. So, you know, we look at what the ordinance is going to be, what the plan, what they're proposing, and what they'll actually have to do for sure, and that's really where we stick to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Tabor. Don't go anywhere because we might need you. All right, we're going to start with people wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance. And I have one person that I have a sheet for, and that is Josh Bryan. Is that, but then I see Karen moving, so Karen, did you want to come talk?
Hi, I can or I can address later any questions?
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Bryan? Please state your name, your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. My name is Josh Bryan. I reside at 1,06 East Camarine Street in Springfield, Missouri. And I represent the ownership group that is proposing the development. First, I'd like to say thank you to your planning and zoning staff. That was a help, and I will get more to that, why that has been important, though I believe you've already heard it. And then, thank you for your time and consideration. We're very excited about Republic for all the things that have been said. It is a hotspot that people love to come to, and so we love the city. We love what we have seen in the city. Some things that are facts for us that we were looking at as considered already is the current PDD and the timeline that it was approved, the cost measures that are there, and a couple that have not been mentioned. The land cost is extremely higher today than it was. And so, while we talk about materials, the other things that are driving these, and from a little time that I spent in material supply that we're also having to consider is supply chain and styles of houses have changed. So, I, as some research for fun with my daughter, I said, who is 23, living in Chicago, so seeing a different part of the world, I said, hey, sweetie, I'd like to know what is the house when you've arrived? And for me, my dad told me it's supposed to be a solid brick home, and this is what it is, and bigger the better, right? This is the American dream. And she's like, I don't want bigger or better. Like, I've watched how you work, and for me, I want something that I can afford and that I'm comfortable in and fits a style. And we've seen those styles come and go. They change very frequently. And we've always said, I had a job where I got to travel the United States and look at housing. And every market that I went to, the further I got away, the styles changed a little bit more. And the longer I was here, I saw styles come and go. And so, those are things to keep in mind. The other thing that was really important for us is when we came in, we bought, and we are new, developing in the city. And so, we wanted to try to kind of open-handed work with staff as to, hey, how do we do this? And we want to be good neighbors and try to figure out what's that look like in your community. And so, I do thank you for the staff that is there. And there's been a lot of questions about type of houses, and I can say we don't really have all the answers to those except that we know we'd like to build a house that we can be very proud of as developers and fits the model of the community. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak for the ordinance? Seeing none, we will move to those speaking against, and I have two sheets up here. I'm going to randomly pick the one that was on top. Jim Schwab. Good evening, sir. Just state your name and your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Jim Schwab, and I live at 634 East Ginger Big Court. Big, and it's in the Diamond View subdivision. I went to the planning and zoning meeting, and as I listened to all the comments, I didn't hear really one person in favor of this. In fact, to summarize some of the points that were made, traffic, cheap houses, crime, devaluing the property of our houses, the gas pipeline, sinkholes. And even though somebody said there weren't sinkholes, when I bought my property 10 years ago, Gary Blades assured me that there were sinkholes. So, I don't know if any of you know Gary Blades? me that there were sinkholes. So I don't know if any of you know Gary Blades, but he's the one who sold a lot of the lots in Valley Park, in Diamond View Estates, I'm sorry. But I'd like to touch on a couple of things. First of all, my daughter and granddaughters live on Jared and Lynn. And they witnessed traffic like you wouldn't believe speeding through, through Lynn. And with the Shiler Ridge subdivision going in, expanding, with the, the Cronkite Homes that are built, and with this new subdivision, I don't know if the traffic's going to disperse or not, but my guess is, when people want to go to Springfield, they're going to go to Lynn. And they're not going to go the other way because there's not really much you can do the other way, unless you play golf at Island Green. And so I think that most of the traffic is going to be diverted to Lynn, which will cause enormous amounts of traffic through there. And I just think it's unsafe now, and I think it's going to be even more unsafe if you approve this project. Also, I have two neighbors that weren't coming tonight, and they didn't come because they think this is a done deal already. And I told them, you know, don't feel that way. You don't, shouldn't feel that way. But they're already, one of my neighbors has already contacted three companies to build a six-foot fence, because he's so upset about this whole project. And I think you're, you're losing a lot of the green space. And then the last point I want to make is that you have five elementary schools. Bryce is busting at the scenes. The middle school is incredibly crowded right now. And I know you're developing a new fifth, sixth grade center, but that's going to be another issue that you're going to have to address. So.
Thank you, sir. Right on the dot. Appreciate you. All right, and we will move to the last slip I have up here, which is Mr. Hyde, Jim Hyde.
Good to see you, sir. I think at this point, you know the rules, but I'm going to say them anyway, just to be safe, to let you collect your thoughts.
Okay. State your name and your address. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Jim Hyde. I live at 614 South Conroy, Republic. I formerly lived at 965 East Grace in Valley Park. I listened to the planning and zoning meeting. I was unable to attend. We had a death in the family. And otherwise, I would have spoke at that meeting. A lot of the stuff you've talked about has been covered. I just kind of wanted to kind of point out, from my point of view, that there's a need for building sites in the city of Republic for new homes that are 2,500 square feet and above, more affluent type housing. Stone Meadows, Valley Park State, Diamond View are fully developed. These homes are now being built on small latrices outside the city limits of Republic. And these sites are diminishing and pretty well gone. You have Schuler Creek, you have Mission Ridge that just came in. And this is where you're more affluent. People are going and building houses. So I think we're missing a big opportunity to have this 40 acres opened up to build a nicer home. The current building codes in Phase III and above in Valley Park State require at least 2,000 square feet, all brick, three-car garages, with an 812 pitch on the roof, and irrigation in the front. I'm not aware of any construction development within the city limits that had these kind of restrictions or requirements at this time. I think we're missing a good opportunity to attract a more affluent population, older such as myself, into the city and give them an opportunity to build a home that they can be proud of. I believe the need for startup homes is being met. There are several homes in Old Savannah, Monte Cristal, being bought by investor groups for rentals, which seems to be a likely prospect for the high-density homes within this Brookside Development PD. I'm asking you and the developer to reconsider this proposal, and at the very least, keep the property in its current density of 2.7 homes, which would be approximately 108 to 115, 13 homes, as opposed to the current 153. Thank you for all your time, and I hope you'll keep this in mind.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here that is wishing to speak against this that has not had an opportunity to do so? All right, seeing none, that will close citizen participation on this issue. Any other questions, comments, or discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I would just like to point out one thing. As I've had communication with the citizens and with the developers, the developers said that every citizen in the area that they have spoke to has been very, very cordial, very kind. And that just represents Republic really, really well. So thank you for that. We may not always agree, but we can always be kind.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cameron?
Mr. Mayor. So at the last meeting, I made my position clear on this, on the development. I had a chance, I sat down and met with the developers yesterday. We'd never met, just to be clear in that capacity, the first time we'd ever discussed the project. I want to go back a little bit to the history of what I was discussing, because at the last meeting, I expressed the history of this project. And just in fairness to the developer and to those residents, Jim, I was like, I'm shocked that you moved on me. Because I was like, Grace Street, and then you say Conroy, so you're over there by Todd Bissour, I'm sorry. But, but the staff's job, when a developer comes in, is, our mission statement talks about that we'll remove obstacles, and to evaluate and work with the developer. And in this situation, they came in and had a development. I was not aware of that necessarily. It doesn't make it right or wrong. I'm not aware of every single development that comes in. But staff's job is to look at what the law states and what, what is allowed on the use of the property. And at the last meeting, I made it clear, but I'm dealing with the history of the project, not just what they were presented with. So staff's job was to find a way, and I appreciate, because that's what your, your job is to do, is to work with new people that come in, and found a way to maximize the use of the property, which is why the revised PDD. At the last meeting, I stated I didn't recommend the revision of the PDD based upon the history of the PDD, because, Jim, I actually met in your home. So it's like, if you'll recall, there were several of us inside your living room talking about growth and development and working with the residents of that. And as I stated to them, I was like, staff provided a path forward for them, which is their job. And I appreciate the work, Chris, and all you all did, working with the developer. But it's still, the developer moved forward based upon the belief that that was going to be a favorable response here. But it's still at the discretion of this council to vote up or down. So just because staff says that they support it, doesn't necessarily mean it warrants a favorable approval here. But in fairness to the developer and my staff and what they worked on, when I made those statements, they're oblivious to where my position was. Well, I've got the history of this project in the back of my mind. And as I stated to them yesterday, my word to the community and those citizens, what we talked about, working with the developer, collaborating with the developer, and the citizens in that, that area was not just to fill it up with a bunch of homes, it was a specific concept. And it was 2.7 units, and that's what we agreed to. And we had those public meetings, if you recall, at the rec center, all of which the, the new developers were oblivious to, and it was not conveyed on the front end. And that's just, that's where the communication disconnect. And I'd be completely out of line if I did not at least acknowledge that there was a history of it that was missed in that discussion. But if anyone stands to blame in that, that would be me. Because it's not conveyed to make sure with my staff that that stuff is conveyed on the front end. But it still does not nullify this council's ability to vote it up or down. So I don't want to negate what we talked about in the past when I was sitting, because I do recall the traffic discussion in the crosswalk. You remember all this? You want me to change the speed limit and all that? We just had some...
And I still want to change.
Jim, not tonight, brother. Yes, but it's not this developer, it's the history of that project that goes back. And so I do appreciate the work of this, of this group and your, and just the professionalism by which you handled it. And so I just wanted to communicate that position, because if I'm going to make a statement up here about one thing, I also want to protect the fact, staff, I appreciate you working to find a way to facilitate it. Developer, I'm sorry that you take that at that word, but it's still subject to this body's approval. And they have that right for that, as we discussed. But again, I hope you'll give us another chance on, in different ways, even though I don't know the outcome of this. But I do appreciate the, the comments tonight, and it is good to see you, Jim. So come see me again. I'll learn to play pickleball. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Wilson, you had a last thought.
Chris, for you, here a few years ago, didn't they do a traffic study on Lynn? Traffic at that time was 5,000 a day.
Gary, five years ago, man.
Andrew has this number. I know he has this number.
I know he does.
He has this number.
He's going to make one up, probably.
Right? I don't know the number. Shocker. So Lynn, Lynn, the history of Lynn goes back, when I was employed with Green County. Green County actually made the improvements to Lynn. And I did do a speed study back then. And the recommendation of that study at the time was to raise the speed limit. So when you do a...
Don't say it, Jim.
I don't, I don't want to say that I agree with that outcome, but the principles of traffic studies would tell you that you look at the 85th percentile of speed that's traveled, because it has a lot to do with site distance and the width of the road and all these things. That speed study that we hired a consultant to do, recommend raising the speed, just based on the speeds that are traveled. We obviously didn't do that, and I wouldn't recommend that today. When it comes to speed in general, that is a behavior and enforcement problem. Sorry, chief.
He's trying.
Yeah, but generally, yeah, he's, he is trying.
This year was a traffic count.
Yeah, we could get, we could get, we could get the actual number of traffic.
At that time, I'm pretty sure it was 5,000 cars a day.
Sounds...
I think the biggest culprit was the guy that drove a Corvette that lived on Grace Street.
Silver Cadillac.
All right. Sorry, Jim.
You're just stirring the pot. All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson? Thank you, sir. All right. Now, this is a first read, so please remember, get with staff with any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there, is it a clarification error? And there it says 664 Aaron Way. Is it supposed to be Drive instead? Because I just tried to pull up the address, and it's not coming up as Aaron Way. It's kind of as Aaron Drive. I just want to make a...
I can get some clarification on that. There's a number of places where what we pull up or what we see on Green County or our addressing is mismatched.
Yeah, because I just tried to pull up Google Maps, and it's coming up as Aaron Drive. I just want to clarify if it's Aaron Drive or Aaron Way.
Sure. I'll get clarification. I would definitely say that Google Maps is not the authority on that.
They're always correct.
I can get back to you on that for sure.
Mr. Mayor, we owned one of the lots on Aaron Way and sold it on Aaron Way, and the legal description is Aaron Way.
Okay.
All right. So this is a first read. Please get with staff with any questions before the next meeting. Citizens, please get with your council members. Discuss with them your concerns. That's why we're here. All right, moving on to item number nine on our agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-12 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title IV Land Use, Chapter 400 Comprehensive Plan and City Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 400.010, created composition appointment qualifications of the municipal code of the city of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. You're still going. Just, just keep going. We've got as many questions on this one as we did the last one.
I doubt that. This one should be much faster. So staff is looking, we're requesting some amendments to Chapter 400, Comprehensive Plan and City Planning and Zoning, specifically 400 dot 010, which is the Composition Appointment Qualifications section. Two changes have been proposed to this section. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to give the city the ability to appoint up to three alternates to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This, as I'm sure you guys are aware, people have other commitments, things that come up. We need to make sure that we have enough voting members on that, at least have a quorum, but really to have a full, to have a full seated commission in those cases. This, it's an unpaid position, not that, you know, the pay is what brings you guys here. But it is, it is, sometimes people have work conflicts or vacation conflicts, and we understand that. So to have the ability to appoint those alternates, similar to what we do on the Board of Adjustment or are able to do, would be very helpful in making sure those meetings have full commission seating. The other part of that involves the mayor, who is, according to our code, if you read it a certain way, is required to attend those meetings. That the state does not require the mayor or their designee or pro temp to attend those meetings. And we would make it optional that they attend those meetings. Obviously, they're very welcome to attend those meetings and sit with us.
No one's ever told me that.
I just was made aware of it myself.
All right. My attorney's saying it's arguable. So if she can argue me, it's my way out.
All right.
So, thank you. Questions from council on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just wanted to make sure I understood everything correctly. And so this doesn't, this, in total, what we'll have is seven commissioners with three alternative, or alternates?
So what we would have is, we would appoint, yes, we would appoint the same number of commissioners, seven commissioners, and then we would appoint up to the three alternates. The alternates would be asked to attend every meeting. In the event that we had an absence, we would have them sit in that meeting. Also, in the, in the event that we would have a vacancy, we would have, you know, a very quick and easy person to appoint, rather than to go through this long process, which can sometimes take months to find people to fill that.
Sure. And so does this affect, the only thing, the only other thing I didn't notice was with the council liaison, does this affect any of the council liaison part of that?
No, the council liaison is still supposed to attend those meetings.
Okay, perfect. One more question, and maybe general question. The requirements of the Planning and Zoning Commission to live in a specific ward of the city, is that a part of this as well?
So we're required to have at least one representative from each ward, and, you know, we strive to do that and keep one of those on there. Having an alternate, there are situations where we have, since there's only seven members, we can have two from three of the wards and one from one. In the event that that one representative vacated, we would have an immediate alternate to point, to put in there, and we would always be able to meet that code requirement. So that is, you know, an added benefit of the alternates.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please remember, this is a first read, so you can get with staff with any other questions. Just tell me where I need to go, I guess. All right, moving on to resolutions. This is item number 10 on our agenda, 24-R-12, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Performance Food Group, Inc., DBA Performance Food Service, Missouri, to provide professional food service delivery for the Parks and Recreation Department concession operations. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-12, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Excited to be here to talk with you guys about one thing that's really near and dear to my heart, food. It's an opportunity for us to talk, tell you about the processes that we're looking at for improvements for the Republic Parks and Recreation, particularly with the Rush, the Republic Aquatic Park that is opening. With that in mind, approximately six months ago, we reached out to first food service vendors in the area, wanted to know more and wanted to understand what food service delivery was exactly. For the last umpteen years, 20-plus years, Parks and Recreation staff has been attending bulk retail groceries and picking up groceries to provide concession opportunities. With that, we found out through first food service delivery, we would have the opportunity to have goods delivered to us. And additionally, we would have a premium product. Not only will this premium product be something that will be served at the Rush, Republic Aquatic Park, but it'll also be available for future complexes, future facilities, perhaps future events as well for Republic Parks and Recreation. So with this, we are asking to enter into a contractual agreement with Performance Food Group. They are a national organization that is, has a local warehouse distributor, distribution here on, on Division in Springfield. So they are an organization that we met with. They provide premium products that really will take from our prepackaged goods, our traditional concession items, and really kind of make it a next level opportunity for us to provide food, snacks, desserts, and really kind of taking it to the next level. So with that, the Rush is something that we really aspire to have that. And with that, we are recommending approval.
So you say they're bringing premium stuff. Could you give some examples?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've, for a long time, we've served goods such as pretzels, hot dogs, skittles, the general concession items. With that, we now have... various lines that we can provide. So, really, one of the things we're exclusively looking at right now is a taco bar opportunity for the Rush, some kind of opportunity to provide some kind of entree item. Additionally, a premium item such as frozen cheesecake fluff and a waffle cone, I've had it myself, it's incredible, it really is a premium item. It really is a next level thing, it's a next level experience, so, really, truly, they provide...
Say it again, cheesecake?
Yeah, it's frozen cheesecake fluff. Yeah, it's essentially, it looks like an ice cream, it's not an ice cream, it's a cheesecake fluff, they put it on a waffle cone. So, we have that opportunity to provide those kind of things at our events. So, we will offer the traditional items, we'll have the pretzels, we'll have the nachos, we'll have the pizzas, but they're going to be, instead of just your traditional item that has been picked up at Sam's and/or Costco, other bulk goods that may or may not be in stock, we will have a straight distribution to us, we will have consistency in our product, and it'll be what is a premium item, so.
So, for the last 20 years, you've been sending Jared in his van to Sam's to pick up stuff to sell at the Aquatics.
Yeah, we actually used the bus that they were referring to earlier, but...
Fair enough. Questions from council on this issue? Yes, sir.
Just a general question, there's no tacos in Lazy River, right? There's like a spot they go eat.
So, no food, no food in, near the water, there will be opportunities for food to be mobile, that is one thing that people do desire, when they're attending the Aquatics Park, they desire for that food to be mobile, so, you know, it will be something that is served in a way that they can walk around and move around, correct?
Sorry to get off track, I was just...
No, absolutely.
Until now, we weren't talking about tacos, so...
Yeah, hey, near and dear to my heart, it's food, we can talk about it all day.
Other questions? Mr. Wilson?
How often will they deliver?
Twice weekly, so they currently have other organizations they work with within the City of Republic, so they deliver twice weekly. I believe it's Tuesday and Friday, we have the opportunity to submit a mobile order or an in-person order by 4:30 PM the day prior, so it really is streamlining our operation, reducing the trips that we're making significantly. We could occasionally be making five, six, seven trips within just a few day span to pick up goods, so marginal increase in cost and a significant increase in the offering of our goods, so.
Plus that'll free up a couple employees.
Absolutely, absolutely will. Yeah, those things are hard to measure, but if we were measuring the time and the cost of those employees and what they're really putting towards that, that is something that we are going to be significantly improving on in terms of efficiency.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of 24-R-12, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes by a vote of 12 to 0. Thank you, Garrett. Eight to zero, I looked down and saw the number 12, it's 24-R-12. Seven to zero, thank you. This is why I have you here. Seven to zero. Moving on to item number 11, this is 24-R-13, a resolution of the City Council appointing new authorized signers for the city's general operating account and bond proceeds account with RVest Bank and modifying the process by which the city is to provide notice of any changes of said signers. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-13, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good evening, Mr. Ford.
Good evening, Bob Ford, Finance Director. Seems like I've been here a few times doing this same thing. You'll recall from a few months back, we modified our signers for our two accounts, both for the bond proceeds account as well as our operating account, and named Mr. Cameron, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Keeling, and myself as signers on those accounts. With Mr. Nelson's impending departure, we need to remove him as a signer and replace him with a new signer. Our plan is to change this a little bit, instead of naming individuals as signers, we're asking you to name roles as signers. So, we're asking you to name the city administrator, the assistant city administrator, chief of staff, and the finance director. And then what we will do operationally, is if any of those roles were to change in the future, we'll just notify RVest Bank, we'll update the signature cards, but we won't need to come back and say, Bob left, let's replace him with somebody else. So, staff is recommending approval of this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Do we have questions from council on this issue? I assume this is okay with the bank?
Fine with the bank.
Okay. Hearing all that, this is a resolution, we can take it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of 24-R-13, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. That resolves the last thing on our agenda, we will move on to reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Thank you to all the citizens that came out tonight to express your concerns, to the developers that showed up as well, thank you for being here. For council, I know there's been several calls and emails for, and reaching out, I appreciate reaching out for background and learning as much about every topic as you can. Chris Taber, great job tonight, I think you did a very, very good job, I appreciate all the work that you did just to prepare that agenda item, and you handled it extremely well and communicated it very well. Garrett, great job, you know, I'm gonna pick on you every time, so, but I think you did a great job tonight explaining yourself, and so, Senate Bill 979 is beginning, again, I guess there's some more discussion of picking that bill up, and so, there's been a revised version that's come out, I've asked our attorney, our legal counsel, to work on language, and so hopefully I will send out just at least some portion of our comment that we would be more satisfied with, and hopefully release that this week, even though I'm still not sure of its ability to, what's the status of that bill? I will tell you that I did learn, just in general terms, when the House budget did drop this week, that Republic did not receive funding in this budget, in numerous conversations and discussions at the Capitol. First, I want to thank Senator Huff and Representative Davidson, they've worked very hard on our behalf, because we've received $50 million in the last two years, and so, in meeting with the governor's staff, it was abundantly clear that we have received probably one of the highest allocations comparably to anywhere else in the state. And I understand that, but we will continue to, and talking with Representative Davidson this morning, continue to work on ways to address the funding needs at the Capitol. So, I do believe, I do believe there's still an opportunity, it's gonna be a while, but the one thing about it is the way Bob and the staff and Andrew structured the debt on the wastewater plant, working with the compliance group, is it has no early payoff. So, anything that we can secure, working with Representative Davidson, or even with the House and Senate moving forward in the future, that will help us offset the cost of that project. So, but again, I want to make it abundantly clear that if you get a chance, see Representative Davidson or Senator Huff, the ability for them to provide more is potentially there, but at the same time, they gotta represent the whole state, and so I understand that. I'd like to seen the 25 million added this year, but again, I do not want to disregard what they've been able to do for us, and I want to make it clear that if anybody asks, that they went to bat for us, and I appreciate that, so, but there's still work to do on Senate Bill 979, again, just to find a win-win situation. And let me be clear about something about Senate Bill 979, because I think it gets lost, for those that don't know, it's an annexation bill that was presented by Springfield. I, my position is in no way that I want to see Springfield landlocked and not the ability to grow, because we need a healthy Springfield, we're adjacent to Springfield, it's kind of the biggest city, so obviously the smaller cities around it. But I think that just how that's communicated and how that's done moving forward is something that we can partner on and work collectively on, so we want to see them expand and grow. It's not an anti-growth to Springfield competitive bill, it's just how do we achieve that, that we're all on the same page? We have, those that don't know, we have government boundary agreements with those cities, it brought into question what those boundaries would look like, could they, does the state statute supersede that? Those that may or may not be aware, we're in current litigation regarding a, or as a third party, even it's friendly litigation, but all those things were part of the reasoning of opposing the bill and still having concerns with it. So, we will continue to work on it and provide amendments and continue to work to see some way that it's conducive to the whole region and to a good partnership with us in Springfield. And then the last part, I appreciate the historical society, I really do, I mean, Andrew will know this, we've labored over that building, we've still got more discussions in the future with the buildings in the downtown. Our future's not in the downtown from our facilities, we're growing as a community, as an organization, but how can the historical society leverage those buildings and utilize those spaces is gonna be important. But with that, I would also remind you that we have a ballot measure coming up, six questions, a recreational marijuana ballot, and then there's also just a few of you on the ballot, so, in case you weren't aware. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Reports from council. Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question. Andrew, Main Street workshop next week, what was the time, or was the location on that for the Main Street revitalization workshop? I meant to look, and so, yeah, you didn't look either. It just came out, so I...
It's at the church there on Main Street?
It's at the church on Main Street, so it'll be there versus... Okay. So, again on David, don't forget to vote, April 2nd, that's coming up, it's on a Tuesday, it doesn't change, so I appreciate everyone that will come out to vote. Appreciate all the signs I've seen out, and, you know, the action on this election and seeing some postings and stuff, whatnot, from the candidates, so that's always appreciated. Great job to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I appreciate all the citizens that came out, I appreciate the work of the commission, and I appreciate the work of the city staff. That was a difficult meeting, and so I appreciate everyone getting through that. And as always, make sure that you check out that end piece there with the P&amp;Z 101, it's become one of my favorite things, and so I really appreciate putting that on and trying to further educate us and the commission as well. Don't forget to vote, that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin? Any other reports? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't want to take too much time, but when I was a kid, let me take you way back. My dad and just about every coach in sports I had repeated the same phrase, not about me, but about significantly better athletes than me, when they would say things like, you can't teach size, or you can't teach speed, right? So, another one of those things that applies to this room, and it's happened a couple times now, is you can't teach passion, right? It's not learned, it's just inside of you, and if you have it, it doesn't matter if you're a bad public speaker or forget to breathe while you're doing it. The fact that you're doing it, and even though you and me, or me and somebody else on this council might not agree with the things you're saying, there's a couple of things that you said, Brian, when you were up there, about the number of people who show up to vote, and issues for our entire community being decided by this much of it, right? And I agree wholeheartedly with your message of get out and do it, get out and vote, just like Eric just said. But more than that, I appreciate that you've got passion and are not dissuaded by whatever internal fears of talking in front of people, you're just doing it. That's cool, to me, that's great. I don't have that part, but I don't think I have the passion that you have either, so, let's merge, you and me, we'll figure out something. You know what I mean?
I don't know what that monster would look like, gentlemen.
Well, you can't teach size, it'd be pretty big, it'd be pretty big. But yeah, I just want, I appreciate you coming out and talking, even if you and I don't agree on something, the passion you have for that and this community is awesome, don't lose that. That's it. I'm only gonna be here for two more weeks, that's the only thing I was gonna say, so...
Anyone else? Seeing nothing?